I'd like to call this meeting to order for our first livestreamed Board of Education meeting, which is a study session. Let's start off with our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Take your seats, please. Announcements, once again, this is a livestream meeting. Can everybody still see me? I'm looking at the agenda on a different screen, but first time we turn this. Following an executive order 202.1, which allows suspension of law allowing the attendance of meetings telephonic or similar service. At this point, can we adopt an agenda? Can I get a motion? Mr. Gilbert?
Second.
Mrs. Hoffman, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I count as all in favor. Any nays? All right, motion passes. So at this point, this is a study session. I would like to remind everybody, public comments can occur at our next meeting, which is April 7th, or you can contact the board by email at boe@chenschools.org with any comments or questions. All questions come into the office of the Public Information Officer and are shared with the Board and their Superintendent as appropriate. Policy questions, concerns are typically addressed by the Board President. Operational questions are typically addressed by the Superintendent and her designated. At this point, we'll turn it over to Dr. Robinson to, I think, we felt it was appropriate to address some of the major COVID-19 issues that have come up, and he can start with that to provide everybody a quick update. Then we can shift into budget, and we do have the opportunity for questions to come forward, we believe, through the livestream that can be brought back at the end of the meeting. Go ahead, Dr. Robinson.
Thank you very much, Mr. Presley. I think, I'm not sure if, if the livestream is working as it should. Certainly, there was an attempt to do so, so we may be having some technical glitches, but regardless, this meeting will be recorded and posted, and we could do a necessary follow-up if we need to. Just by the way of updates, clearly, everyone knows that we are under the current order of the Governor, and we are continuing to work on providing education in a remote platform, and there are many, many questions that's being asked by parents, many questions being asked by teachers, and probably the most significant question is, what will happen after April 1st? At this point, the answer is, I don't know, because the reason why we're closed right now is based upon the Declaration of the Governor, so we'll await that to see what there may be for the coming weeks. In interim, we're in the process of creating several different platforms to provide information to parents. Teachers have been doing a tremendous job of making connection with students. Google Hangout is the platform, a conferencing platform that we're encouraging teachers to use right now, and I say that because as technology change, we have to make sure that we're using platforms that are consistent with the privacy regulations, and I think some of the privacy regulations were developed before we found ourselves in this dilemma in terms of conferencing with kids, and so certainly, we will continue to encourage parents to monitor their children's use of computers, and so we're trying to make sure, again, we're providing access while yet protecting the safety and privacy of students while they're online. In terms of some next steps, some of the big rocks that we have to figure out, and this will be, this will be based upon what, how far, how long, we may be potentially in a suspension of onsite learning in terms of things such as grading, how would grading apply, what would be the grades for the third quarter versus grade for the fourth quarter? People asking those questions, questions surrounding graduation. Those are legitimate questions. At this point, it would be very premature for us to provide an answer to, because all those answers are contingent upon how long we'll be, again, be in a suspended state for onsite learning. In terms of a big piece that we're really focused on is the equity piece, in terms of students having access to computers. Right now, we're looking at trying to identify students that we have been informed by parents otherwise, that, that, that there's a need for a computer and trying to provide that access as much as possible. Wi-Fi access is still a concern for some, and again, we're asking parents to reach out if they can to let us know, and if much is possible, we will try to provide some of those resources. Again, these are different times, trying times, challenging times, but also opportunistic times for us to really think about how we do education differently as we move forward. So, so again, some of the selling questions, we don't have. The big one, when will we come back to school? What does graduation look like? What does grading look like? All those are not only Shen questions, but we're also taking a very regional approach. When I say regional, coordination through the capital region, BOSI's, in terms of how we look at a curriculum, how we look at grading, because we don't want to have a situation where one school district is doing one way, another school district is doing another way, and it creates, you know, people saying, why can't you do it this way? Why can't you do this way? So we're trying to get the best minds at the table to come up with some consistent protocols to some of those big questions. In terms of essential staff, there was some recent edict came out, the Governor, about essential staff. Right now, the large majority of our personnel are actually working remote or at home, and so, so we're certainly trying to comply with that edict of trying to have as many people work remotely as possible. I myself, I've been in office every day and probably will be in office every day to ensure that certain things are happening, and we'll have staff come in and out based upon some essential needs that we need to take place. Another big question that came up recently, we have several construction projects that are lined up. The construction work is deemed to be essential work, and so we're trying to continue with that in a manner that, that again, upholds to the safety edicts, and certainly, the construction industry is aware of that. They're keenly aware of some of those edict, what they need to follow through on. So again, we're monitoring those things very closely and trying to ensure that as things transpire in buildings, that we continue to disinfect buildings as we move forward. To this date, all of our buildings have gone through a very comprehensive deep clean, so that's a kudos to the custodial staff and Barb Salaker for her team for doing so, and we'll continue to do those kind of things, because if or when students return and staff return to school, we want to make sure that people walking into environments that are as clean as, as they have ever been, and certainly want to continue that protocol even after staff return. But when that date occurs, it's something that's right now outside of my control, and clearly will be contingent upon the Governor's most recent, or should I say, next declaration. So I stop there. Any questions related to that specifically?
I do have a question. Dean, we know that the, the current guidance, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that schools will be closed through April 1st. That's just next week. So we, what can we say? I mean, we can say something now, I believe, to that. I understand that, that we have, well, I don't believe, unless you have some information to share, but we have not received guidance from capital region BOSI's to extend beyond that, but people do want to know what our plan is going past that date.
So, so two, two points. Just want to clarify for one point. The determination is not by the BOSI's. I don't want to confuse that. The determination will come directly from the Governor. Our current situation is based upon the Governor's recent executive order, period. If we continue open school April 1st or continue staying in a suspended state, that will be, again, based upon the Governor's executive order. So, so, so right now, that's, that's where the determination point is, based upon the Governor. In terms of what can we say and what will we do, we'll continue the same message that we're sending now is the fact that we're, we'll be continuing working in a virtual platform throughout the end of this week and continue into next week, and so, so that, that will be our current condition. If we find ourselves in a longer term suspension, clearly, we have to even ramp up more so what we're doing in a virtual platform, and so, so some of those, some of the things that we're doing now will ramp up quite a bit more in terms of continuity of education, particularly at a secondary level. So, so, so a lot of these things, while people like to know what we're going to do next week, the reality of it is, so much of the determination about next week is, in fact, contingent upon what's the next announcement. I anticipate that if the Governor is going to make some extension of, beyond April 1st, that should come by the end of the week or first part of next week, because to say Tuesday, hey, send kids back on Wednesday, quite frankly with you, I think that's, quite frankly with you, very, I don't want to say inappropriate, but it won't be a manageable thing, because there's so many other factors that need to go into play before we start transitioning students back into the school environment. Any other questions?
Okay, we have any more questions? Go ahead, Oliver.
Can I just ask one more? It's actually with the construction work. So, the plan is, because it is considered essential, the timeline has moved up, and we're, we're starting work sooner. Is, is that a correct interpretation of what you said?
Not necessarily so. Right now, if, right now, we are, we are planning the schedule based upon the schedule that we had planned before. However, if we find ourselves with extended closure for weeks, months at a time, clearly, it creates an opportunity for us to expedite that schedule. So, so contractors are aware of it and are willing to do so as we move forward.
Okay, so, any other questions? Go ahead, please.
So, so, Mr. Presley, if you don't mind, I'm going to transition to a presentation mode, just to show on the screen the, the budget document that we have been working on, and once I get to that point, I'm just going to offer some, some initial comments. Again, the budget document is linked to the board agenda, and so I'm just going to, just going to walk through, I won't necessarily walk through every slide, recognizing that this has been an ongoing focus for the board. So, on the screen right now should be the budget development process. Before I go into it, there are a couple of things that, that we need to be cognizant of. There's a lot of conversation taking place right now in terms of, of if we are finding ourselves in an extended suspension of onsite classes for students, what does that mean in terms of board votes and board, board member elections? There's a real conversation that's taking place right now with the New York State Education Department and several statewide organizations. There are mixed approaches. A popular approach amongst superintendents, I would say across New York State, is to, in fact, allow boards of education to have the same authority that municipalities now have for the passage of budgets, if the budget is, in fact, the budget levy is, in fact, below the established tax cap. So I want to clarify that again. One piece of that is to calling for legislation to allow boards, boards of education to approve budgets in the same manner that municipalities currently have on the books, which means boards acting on a budget if the tax levy is below the calculated tax cap for the school district. As it relates to Board of Education members, one piece of that is to allow incumbent board members to, term to be extended for an additional year as we move forward. So again, that's only one proposal. There are multiple proposals on the table, and the New York State Education Department, New York State School Boards Association, New York State Council of School Superintendents, many organizations are in the conversation right now to try to find a consensus. I'm hoping by the end of the week, we'll find a consensus because of all the other regulatory timelines that we have to follow, such as tonight's meeting of adopting language for a budget and a 45-day notice. Those things have not been suspended, and so subsequently, that's why we have the meeting tonight, and subsequently, we'll have those notices going into newspaper in accordance with established timelines. Related to that, too, is a big question in terms of state aid. Right now, we have no new, no additional news on state aid. The, the telltale sign will be, where would the state come out with their budget? If we hear that the state is delaying their budget process, clearly, there'll be a sign that the school budget will also be delayed. So, so with that being said, I'm just going to quickly walk through some of these slides. Again, some of them the board has seen. The first slide is just a articulation of the school mission and the things that drive our decision-making, not only from a budget process, but from an everyday operational process. Here is the budget goals up in terms of fiscal responsibility, and I think as a school district, we have been very responsible from a fiscal perspective, not only having extremely low per pupil costs, but also having very high results for performance for students, and so, so we're pleased with the progress in terms of fiscal responsibility. This kind of drives the three pieces that we look at in terms of what we want the budget to achieve. Again, the focus is on looking at what we do through an equity lens. In other words, are we being fair to the various differences that our students bring to the table? Are we recognize those differences, maximizing those differences, and giving students a varied approach to maximize their respective talents? And so, in a nutshell, that's what this slide indicates. This talks about, as we look at the budget, the things that we're proposing, what's the value-add aspects to it. In terms of academic capacity, we look at class size and class compositions, in terms of who are the students, what are their various needs? In terms of equity supports, we try to have service follow needs and try to have very targeted supports to address the various needs of students, from everything, from academic intervention to acceleration to, to special education to ELL, you name it, we want to try to address the various needs of our students. Academic rigor is the notion that we constantly trying to ensure that the courses that we're offering are, in fact, preparing students for the next level, be it college or careers after they leave Shen. The effectiveness piece of it, again, looking, always trying to strategically repurpose to maximize our resources. That's a big part of our budget process, a big part of our administration. How do we ensure that we're maximizing every dollar that's invested in the school system? And personnel is a big part of that, because recognizing that we do, a significant portion of the school budget goes towards personnel benefits. The slide to the side is a reflection of the revenue and tax cap, which we'll talk through later, but something you just want to point out is that when we look at our tax rate, our tax rate on average over the past three years is actually a negative, and, and so, so for the situation where we are right now from an economic situation, we certainly know that, that our tax levy has been pretty low over the years and provide us an opportunity to continue programs into the future. Some, some things to point out in terms of how we structure the thought process, there are certain mandated contractual costs that we have to address. Health insurance is a, is a big cost piece, retirement pension costs a big cost piece, and collective bargaining, we're in the process now of negotiating with one of our larger bargaining unit, the CSEA unit. So, so again, we have to think about those cost implications, not on in this year's budget, but for future years' budget. From the instructional lens, we're looking at equity outcomes, we're looking at special education, we're looking at enrollment, we're looking at mental health, we're looking at alternative schedule, we're looking at curriculum enhancements as the standards change for, for New York. We're looking at some articulation agreements to additional courses in the CTE pathways. From the operational piece, we continually trying to ensure that we have classrooms where the rooms themselves, the furniture in classrooms are engaging and captivating students in terms of being learners and certainly creating that environment where, where kids are truly turned on to learning. We're looking at safety is always an ongoing piece for us as a school district as well. So, just to kind of recap some of the major cost structures, health insurance, we anticipate right now to be flat for the coming year's budget, and that's a lot of work by many people in terms of analyzing our plans, in terms of being a part of some consortium, in terms of exercising some self-insurance options. Again, trying to ensure that we're providing solid, solid benefits to our employees and trying to minimize or contain the overall increase, which you see right now in this, in the 2021 budget, we're anticipating about a 2% adjustment in health insurance, which when you think about what's happened around us, that's pretty remarkable in many ways. The retirement pension costs, as you see here, we look at retirement pension costs, we're certainly mindful of the fact that, that we have to contribute towards the pension costs for our, our employees, and you see the teacher retirement increase is anticipated about 9.5% or about $6.9 million. The employer retirement system, which is largely our support staff, staffers, is about 14.6%, which is about $4.5 million cost impact. So we're certainly mindful of those type things. As I mentioned before, we're in the process of going through negotiation with CSEA, which right now has about 687 full-time members, which mean we actually have more bodies than 687, but when we translate it to a full-time equivalency, it's about 687 members. And so, so clearly, that's something that, that we have to take into consideration as, as we move forward. The next piece that, that I want to, to talk about is the equity and outcomes piece. Clearly, the, the, one of our larger growing population, the student needs is in ENL, so we're looking to add some additional capacity in ENL to address those type things, and we also have a going for math acceleration at elementary level, and certainly trying to add some capacity to, again, meet the needs of those students. Special education continues to be an area that we're focused on. Last, last year, we implemented a move program, and for the coming year, we're looking to expand that capacity somewhat, so we're going to continue to look at a move program, and there could be some cost implications. Outside placements, we're in the process of going through CSCs right now, even in the current COVID-19 situation, CSC meetings are still being held remotely, and so we see, want to see how those things pan out and implications for 2021. Enrollment is a big piece of it. We are somewhat stabilized in terms of enrollment, so there could be some potential reduction in K5. Again, we're watching that very closely, and we'll watch that for the next several weeks here in terms of the budgetary implication of that as well. And the last two pieces here are the two courses that the board approved recently, and we're pleased to try to bring those courses on in September of 2020. Alternative schedule is a big focus for us, and when you think about right now, it's an ideal time, when you think about in a remote platform, having an alternative schedule would have been a godsend in many ways, because it would allow us to, to slow down the process in terms of the amount of content that kids are getting on a daily basis and/or the amount of content that teachers are expected to, to, to transmit on a daily basis. And even without alternative schedule, we're still very much looking at how are we going to schedule that if we find ourselves in a longer term suspension of onsite learning, because it has to be in a way that's manageable to both teachers and staff, and so we certainly want to continue our focus on alternative schedule for the coming year. Mental health and wellness is a big piece of it. We know it's a continuous piece, and we're seeing it now, particularly now in the situation we are in, recognizing that we're trying to do everything from virtual to telecommunication to support our students. Our situation, our contract with Saratoga Center for the, for the family continues. They continue to try to support students virtually and otherwise, and so that's a big piece that we want to make sure we continue into 2021 as well. Curriculum enhancements and next-gen standards is a big piece of it, as I mentioned before, and technology. It's so ironic, because we have spent a lot of money, a lot of time, a lot of focus on integration of technology over the years. In many ways, it's a good thing that we did, because we were able to, I'd say, relatively seamlessly transition towards this virtual platform with the integration of Chromebooks that we have, and certainly, there's a lot of lessons learned from the current condition in terms of some gaps that we still have that we need to ensure that we are addressing in the coming budget as well. Tuitions, again, we just have some ongoing outside placement tuitions that we want to continue. Repurposing is a big piece of it in terms of, again, looking at some of the things that we spend, spend money on, and how can we realize some savings or some reductions in expenditures for the coming year, and that's what represents some of those type things. And even some other courses, some things related to athletics, we're looking at some expanded opportunities for some students and some contractual pieces that we need to shore up as we move into the coming year. The classroom piece, as I mentioned before, a big part of it is trying to transition slowly into a furniture replacement cycle, recognizing that we cannot do this in any one budget cycle, and quite frankly, the dollar amount is too large, so we're trying to, on an annual basis, do some transitioning of classroom furniture to be much more future-ready in terms of the furniture that we have in our classrooms. Similar, as I mentioned, safety before, looking at emergency texting, certainly in this crisis situation, communication is key, and certainly trying to figure out different ways to enhance our communication, including the live streaming of board meetings. And so those kind of, some of the things that, that necessity has struck us, and we need to, to, to expedite some of those processes. Operation and maintenance, we continue to focus on professional development for our maintenance staff, and again, this ideal situation, because of some of the training that custodian and cleaning staff went through, I think they were much more equipped to do some of the disinfecting and some of the deep cleaning that we had to do with our buildings. So in many ways, again, because of the things that we did in the past, it positioned us to be in a better place as we're dealing with the current crisis, and we certainly want to continue to be positioned in the future to, to do what, do those things that we need to do normally and/or deal with any other uneventual, any things that unplanned things that, that currently not on the horizon. Transportation, similarly, some investment in safety and human resources trying to go online, and again, the times speak to that. There's so many processes that we still have, paper processes, and we're trying to push those online under this current crisis. So the current situation actually forced us to, again, expedite some of the things that we thought we had some time to do and to put those things closer on the priority list than, than not. So with all that being said, a big focus is looking at some retirees. Right now, we have 15 retirees and trying to leverage those resources. What I mean by that, recognizing that if someone retires at a higher salary and we hire someone back at a lower salary, there's a differential, and that differential is used to offset a lot of the things that I just mentioned before, so we try to keep the budget footprint relatively stable from one year to the next. This slide just give you a sense of what we're talking about, just breaking out into larger object categories. Instructional salaries essentially funds that's going directly to our instructional staff, teachers primarily. So you see a large portion of our budget, almost 36% of our budget goes towards instructional salary, 3%, three and a quarter roughly, is going towards administrative salaries, and 16 and a half percent roughly goes towards our support staff salary. So, so this gives you a good sense of where funds are being invested and what category of personnel as we move forward. Equipment is a small portion of our budget, but it's a significant portion of our budget in terms of impact. Contractual is a lot of things lumped into contractual. That's everything from some of, a lot of our service agreements, from, from operation and maintenance to, to even instructional agreements. So there are many things going to the contractual line in terms of keeping processes going and, and contractual obligations that we have, again, to keep processes going. Textbooks and library, this is basically maximizing the state-aidable amounts, and so we certainly want to do that every year to, to, to maximize the amount of state aid that the district is eligible to realize through textbook and library purchases. BOSI's has been a great collaborator for us. Our BOSI's line have been fairly even over the course, over the course of the, the past several years, and as you see here, again, we're talking about a slight adjustment in BOSI services from one year to another. There are many, many items that fall onto the BOSI service, but it just gives you a sense that BOSI's relatively flat from one year to the next. Surprise? Yes?
Can I ask just a quick question on the BOSI's?
Sure.
You mind? So typically, the BOSI's aid is reimbursed the following year, so what we spend this year would be reimbursed next year, correct?
That's correct. BOSI's and textbook and transportation and some special education services are what we call expenditure-driven aid. In fact, when I go into, into the state aid side, I elaborate a little bit more on some of those as well.
Okay. That was going to be my question, is if we're not spending it this year because we're out of school, does that affect what we get next year? That's it?
Yeah, obviously, it'd be a lower amount as well. Correct. Just the last two categories here, then I'm just going to transition from some revenues and open up some questions from the board. The benefits, as I said, we, we hire people. We have about 2,200 bodies, people who work for the school district, and that translates to about 1,600 full-time equivalent. So, so we have a lot of people, and, and I say that because, considering the economic times, the, the school in many ways serve as the economic engine for this community, because there's so many people employed locally by the school district that our actions can impact families in significant ways. And so when people think about the budget, it's not necessarily even about a school budget, quite frankly with you, it's about how the school itself is a, is a big economic engine for this community, because people invest in the school and the school reinvests into the community. So it's a cycle. It's a cycle of investment and reinvestment, and I think that's a significant point that people need to understand, and I think that point couldn't, couldn't be more prominent than right now, when you think about, we have all our employees who, who are on a base compensation are still getting paid. Many small businesses cannot afford to do so. However, the school, as a part of our, of our commitment to, to ensure that we keep people on board and try to be productive in terms of their utilization, is something that we're going to try to do as long as we can continue to afford to do so. But again, it's a great point. I just wanted to emphasize, as we think about things like benefits, health insurance, retirement, dental, medical, all those things fall into that, social security, all those things fall into that benefit category. Transfer fund is largely our debt service, and as the board know, we have been retiring debt, and we try to do that. So when we bring a new capital project online, the impact on taxpayers is absolutely zero, and as you see here, we're seeing almost a half million dollar reduction in our debt service line, and so, so, so we anticipate, again, so if we bring a project on board, right now, the plan was to a potential vote in September, but clearly, we have to reconsider that, considering the current situation. But the point of the debt service, again, is to try to keep it relatively flat, so when we bring new projects on board, we're not creating undue burden on taxpayers. So right now, the budget proposal that we have is 182.5 million dollars, and just to kind of put it in a concept, our prior budget was 177. When we look at the pure operational needs, in other words, the things just to keep the current programs going, essentially, it's about, you know, with the plus and minuses, with terms of the things that we're with terms of the things that we're saving and dollars we add in is about 2.6. And the things that, that, that go outside of the plus and minuses between what we add in the savings is about, again, additional $108,000. And so, so when you look at it, the budget is, is largely focused on trying to maintain current services and utilizing any potential savings for some, some targeted investments in programs for, for our students. And so that's the current budget total right now. An increase of 4.7 or 2.6% adjustment in the budget. And I say right now because clearly if things go significantly different over the next couple of weeks, months, we certainly have to revisit this whole equation again. The next slide I want to point out is on the revenue side of the equation. Right now, the revenue picture that we have in there is based upon the governor's budget. In past years, traditionally in the past, and, and this is certainly not one of those traditional years. And traditionally, the, the legislature would come out with two different budget. The Senate would come out with one and the Assembly would come out with one. And then there's a fight between the executive, the assembly and the Senate. And then there's a final budget picture. Right now, we don't anticipate that the budget picture will be any rosier than the governor's budget picture. If not, it could be potentially less than what the, but the governor's budget picture was a month ago. So, so our budget right now is, is based upon the executive budget, which had very minimal increase for us in foundation aid. And so, so we recognize that we, back to, the question was asked before, there's some building aid is a, is a reimbursable aid and you see building aid we anticipate to be lower. And the reason why that's lower because we're back to the debt service line, we're spending less on debt service. So you spend less, you get less. Transportation aid is another reimbursable aid. We spend a little slightly more on transportation, so we expect a slightly bit more for reimbursement for transportation aid. Excess cost aid is for certain special education programs that are, are as, as the title implies, are very costly. There's some aid reimbursement on that beyond the federal dollars. And again, that's a reimbursement piece. Textbook aid is expendable aid. We're not expecting any more for textbooks and software. And hardware, that's what's combined, textbook, hardware, software, library combined into the line I mentioned before. Because we pretty much planning to expand what the reimbursable amount is so we can maximize the reimbursable amount coming back. Similarly, BOCs right now, BOCs aid is based upon what we expect, expected to expend this year. We definitely will have to recalibrate that because probably for a quarter of the year or should I say a third of the year, maybe things are different. So we have to look at those numbers moving forward into 2021 as well. So, so there's still some, some uncertainties as we go through this process and even go through the next several months. Just to put things again in context, property tax is a major source of revenue for the school district. Just to go back to, to show the point, state aid is, is roughly 26, 27% of our budget. Property tax is about 70% of our budget. So kind of put those in context as we move forward. And so we certainly trying to look at property tax and, and try to minimize the impact of that. And so right now, we're looking at a potential 2.9% in the tax levy as we move forward. So that's, that's the current projection as we're looking right now. Just to, to, again, to further, there's some additional revenue sources, smaller revenue sources, but still worthwhile revenue sources, some interest income. And again, when we were into this situation, we were excited because we finally started seeing an increase in interest income. And certainly, the economic downturn is going to impact that. So this one of those areas again that we have to revisit based upon how long this whole suspension of the economy will, will, will take place. We have to revisit even things like interest income and impact on the budget as we move forward. So, so with all that being said, just kind of give you a encapsulation of the, the revenue. 3.8 million dollar increase if we go by the tax cap. So the tax cap allows us to increase by three, the tax levy by 3.8 million dollars. Our current budget as, as proposed, we'll see about a 3.7 million dollar increase. So, so right now, it's a delta of about 73.9 million dollars. So, so we're pretty much right where the, the task cap allowance is as, as we move forward. Just give you some perspective that say, for instance, if we were to reduce, get, say, whatever, if we're fortunate and the state decide, hey, we have some additional revenues, blah, 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 things have changed significantly. And we get an additional $640 million in, $640,000, I'm sorry, in state aid. That will impact the tax levy by a half percent. Similarly, if we were to see at 1.2 million dollars, that impact, impact the tax levy by 1%. Conversely, if we make those reductions in the budget, that's also the impact on the tax levy as well, going the opposite way. So this last slide kind of put everything in perspective. The, the, the budget we see here is about 2.69. The tax, the tax cap allowance will be about 3.0. Budget right now is 2.98 below the tax cap piece of it. As we move forward, as I said, the delta is about 7.39%. So again, I just want to, to transition back and see if there are questions that you may have right now.
Dr. Robinson, it's Christina. Just a question, and I know right now, again, none of us have a crystal ball because wouldn't that be special if we did? But if, for some of the reimbursement aid that we get for based on what we spend in this current year and the aid that we get for next year, if the governor's proposal to potentially roll in all the aid into, say, one bucket, we really won't be able to track then if we're actually getting reimbursed at the rate we should be on what we spent this past year. Or what do you anticipate? I guess the question is really how that's going to affect us going forward, if you can.
Right now, that's still very much one of the things that we are advocating against for the exact reason that you just articulated, Mrs. Rajat. In a sense that every, if everything is lumped in, we have no idea how to, to predict, how to plan forward. And so, so that is a, still a concern. That notion of, of trying to merge all the aid categories is still very much a concern. It's something that I anticipate the legislature would not because it also creates a dilemma for the legislature as well to really try to monitor where funds are going and how they can influence where funds are going.
Thank you.
I have a question. Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Gary.
Okay. Thank you. Dr. Robinson. I think I perhaps I'm the only board member that was serving at the time that the Great Recession occurred and the subprime interest debacle occurred. We lost significant revenues at that time. And I believe that the district navigated that difficulty with a great deal of success. If we should find ourselves faced with a significant change in our state revenues, do you anticipate that you would go through a similar process?
I, I think we'll be compelled to in many ways. And, and if you recall, that process actually took us about five years to stabilize. And, and certainly not one that we hope for. But certainly one that if occurs, we will be compelled to be very strategic about what we spend, what we make reductions in as well. Because the goal is how do we try to avoid having what I call significant or, or impact on the quality of the education that students are receiving. So, so yes, those were extremely trying times during the gap elimination, reduction period. And, and if we're in that situation again, clearly, we to some degree have a roadmap to get through it. And we hope that it won't take the, the five years that it did the last time we found ourselves in a very similar fiscal dilemma.
This is Naomi, and I want to thank Gary for, Mr. Dalala for asking that question because I was also curious what happened with the 2008, 2009 recession and how we managed that and what lessons we learned and hoping that we can apply them now. It's the only thing we have in recent history. This is obviously a completely new situation that, that we don't, we don't have experience dealing with school closures like we're experiencing right now. And understanding what had, the, looking back since, especially since you've been here and Mr. Dalala was here, sharing what was done then and what we'd be doing now because companies are already closing, the texts are sharing for, you know, looking at that closely, that, that probably, I'm guessing, you say it took five years, changes had to be made in that area too. And so I'm hoping that you can share what we learned and what we're going to do going forward since we're facing something similar. That was it. Thank you.
So, so certainly, I, I, I think in many ways, it's probably easier said than done. In, in the gist of it, the bottom line is we, we really focused on, on some strategic reductions, some strategic repurposing of things and, and tried to, to have reductions as painless as possible. And I mean painless programmatically painless. However, we have to remember, anytime we say reduction, we're talking about staff implications. Because the large majority of our budget is salary and benefits. And so, so, so I don't want people to, to think that, that we can go and, and, and cut things without impacting people. The reality of it is most of our budget is expended on people. So, so clearly, we would look for opportunities if we can, where we can to, to, to right-size personnel costs. And I use the word right-size because I don't want the impression to get that this will become a slash and burn scenario because we can't afford that from the perspective of ensuring and preserving the quality of educational experiences for students. And so that's our first priority in terms of investing the resources we have wisely. So, so, so again, we take a multi-year perspective to resolve this, those kind of situations. Because we recognize that if you do a massive reduction in any one year, it's going to be almost virtually impossible to bring those things back in any way, one, that's, that's effective and two, that's cost efficient. So, so it's a very strategic approach that we have to take back and look at some of the things. And in many ways, we're looking at, we have been pretty tight as a system. Because when you look at the, the Shen per pupil costs statewide out of the 487 plus school districts in, in quote unquote, upstate New York, we're in the top, the bottom 15 lowest per pupil. In a region, we had the lowest per pupil. So as a system, we've been very cost-effective. And, and sometimes these type of scenarios makes it even more difficult for us to be more cost-effective, but we will if that's what the times call for. So, so, so there's no singular answer or singular approach. It's, it's literally looking at everything that we have in the system and ask the question, can we do it differently? Can we do it more cost-effectively? And can we, and, and/or can we do without it? And recognizing that, that all those questions have the potential to have personal implications. And so, so we're particularly sensitive about that because we don't want to all of a sudden, as a result of trying to solve one problem, create a larger economic problem for our community as well. Other questions?
I, I did notice that our student board member is at the meeting. Grace, if you have any questions or concerns, this would be a good time to bring them forward.
Hi. I don't, I don't have any questions per se. Mainly just because I know a lot of, a lot of the things that I've had questions about and that a lot of other people have had questions about have been things that unfortunately can't be answered right now. Such as just like school graduation events, things like that. So that's about it for me. But I do think that everything's being handled really well in terms of how teachers are rolling things out. And it's actually interesting too, because I find that a lot of teachers are more following a block type schedule than the normal one, which is interesting considering that's a possibility. Thank you.
Thanks, Grace. I appreciate those sentiments, especially coming from you as a student who, who's experiencing it from a different vantage point. So your perspective is absolutely important. And Mr. Pressley, if I just had the privilege of just asking Grace is, you know, as someone who's sitting here hearing these conversations, to ensure that our students realize that their education continues and, and hopefully students are, are, are doing what they can, as much as they can, to, to engage virtually. We know that a large majority of our students are. We know that because of circumstances, some students are still struggling. And we know that some students are choosing not to engage as much as they should or could. So, so certainly, any, any positive endorsement by our students to student becomes an important piece of it because we can't afford for students to be significantly disadvantaged because of the current situation we're in. And that's why, again, kudos to a lot of our staff, administrators, support staff, teachers, people who've just been really, really rallying. I mean, I gotta tell you, every day, there's another proud moment, proud example of, of people really just saying, you know, what can I do to help? And how can I be creative? How can I be problem solver? How can I be a bridge builder? And, and I think we're doing a lot of neat things for kids. And, and we will continue that focus if we find ourselves in a continued suspension of onsite learning. The learning doesn't stop and our commitment, commitment to excellence doesn't change.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? If not?
Mr. Pressley, you're on mute. I couldn't hear you.
If no more questions, I think we're ready to continue with action items. Let's go to just one last check, Dr. Robinson. So you, you completed the final budget proposal for the agenda?
Yes. So, so it's, it's a relative yes. And I say yes because we have to continue the process. Clearly, if, if things change significantly and the process get extended and we have time to revisit the process again, we clearly do so.
Okay. And so let's go through the action items. And then prior to adjourning, one last look at any questions that have come through the, the link. I haven't seen any yet, but let's, let's offer that as well. So let's go to adopt an agenda for formal notice for 45 days. Can I have a motion on this one? First one, Mrs. Hoffman. Second is Mrs. Stevenson. Any comments, questions?
Just to clarify that this is, this is to adopt the notice without the total amount of the budget for 2021, correct? This is just adopt the language.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
So we've answered that question. All in favor? Raise your hand if you. Any objections? Okay, all, all passed aye. So let's go to action item two, capital project bid awards for the high school science room and tech wings. So can I get a motion on this one?
Aye, motion.
I heard Mrs. Rajat second. Any comments, questions?
I'm motion.
Go ahead, question?
No question, just a motion.
All in favor? Raise your hand.
Aye.
Any ayes? A motion path unanimous? Let's go to change order number three, Titan Roofing. Can I get a motion on this one? Did you go over it first? Any seconds? No second, no motion?
Can I ask you a question?
Augusta Miller has, has provided a second. Go ahead with a question, Naomi.
I, I was just curious what the damage was because what it said is that there was damage to the roof. And I'm, I'm just sort of curious what caused that or do you have any information on that?
This was during that period of memory in the process. If you recall, last summer, spring, we had a significant number of storms. So tons of water damage as a result of things not being buttoned up appropriately.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any ayes? No ayes? Okay, let's go to contract for chemical disposal in harbors. Can I get a good motion on this one? Mrs. Hoffman first, Mr. Rajat second. Any comments, questions?
Just to say that this goes with the B. I, I saw B and D as the same for preparing for the tech wing work.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Any more questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any ayes? No ayes? Motion carries. So at this point, we're, before we adjourn, any final questions on back to the first topic we started, COVID-19? I can tell that the streaming apparently is not working. One more challenge I'm sure we'll overcome soon. But any, any other pertinent questions on that topic?
Bob, I don't have a question. I just want to make a comment though. I just want to say this publicly, and I know we have been, but continue to thank, you know, Dr. Robinson, all the leadership at Chen, as well as our teachers and staff. As we know, this is a new norm for all of us. We're, as we've said, in a certain time of uncertainty. But to know people are seeing the outcome of all the hard work from, you know, from the online learning to the cleaning of the buildings. But there's so much more that's going on behind the scenes that people really don't have a great understanding of how many hours, you know, tireless efforts. And that's coming from someone. Um, and that's coming from someone who works in human services and healthcare. So I see the behind the scenes. So I appreciate that. I just want this community to know that we're all fortunate to be part of the Shen community. Um, because I know other school districts that aren't handling it as well. Um, and just don't have a strong community behind them. So uh, again, thank you everyone for your sage leadership and uh again, tireless efforts.
Thank you. Any other comments? So go ahead, please. Uh, I'm afraid this is a tough one.
Right now, if you, if you're paying attention, I think just about everybody is. Uh, we see a conflict between those who are most interested in the economy and those who seem to be putting the emphasis on life and safety. Uh, maybe that's a simplistic uh characterization, but I think it's fair, fair. Are we actually absolutely powerless to continue to keep our schools closed if we were to deem that those who are higher than we are uh made the decision to open the schools and we don't think it's safe?
I I think, Mr. Delalo, the answer is yes, um, because there's so many regulations that impact what we do. And the last thing we want to do is it's a, it's a delicate balance, right? And because I think that the the discussion of safety is is limited to what information we have. And and certainly we will trust that that be it the New York State um Health Department and all the the health professionals who are engaged in this process. The CDC and all these other organizations that are are vested interest in the medical side of it um will make those decisions. And and clearly, um, I I think that if if decisions are made and there's still a lot of skepticism about the the fit, the the health impact of it, I'm sure there'd be much more uproar, not only from schools, but from others. Um, schools find themselves in a, in an interesting predicament. Um, because while this is a a um, a a a social health, societal health issue, there's also huge political um play um occurring. And then we find ourselves in the middle as educational institution to satisfy all the requirements that our kids need for for the educational provisions. And so so it is a delicate balancing. And I appreciate the question and I appreciate you couching the question as being a challenging question. Because I think that's going to be a question that that many people have to wrestle with before a final determination is made um in terms of of when do we allow for um larger social gatherings again? Because you have to remember, schools are suspended right now as a way to to enforce um 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 the the social distancing piece that that has been proven to to prevent the spread of of most type um viruses, be it the common cold, uh COVID nineteen. Um, and so 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 it's one that we all watch it very carefully and trying to see where this is going to go. And it does put us in a situation where where sometimes it seems to be at odds, but however, we have um, we have tons of other challenges or complexities that we have to contend with as a part of the decision making.
Okay, uh, any question from you?
Yes, um, so so I want to preface this with, a- after Grace mentioned the piece with the seniors, I feel that that it needs to be said that we understand what a special time this is for the seniors. Many were just getting catching spring fever. They're in their final stretch. Um, with a little more week then to go in this this quarter and then they're into their last quarter. They're deciding on colleges. Um, their 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 last um um session of spring sports, NISBA concerts, uh, you know, the prom and graduation. There's so much going on. Um, it 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 feels like their senior year has been hijacked. All their lives have been interrupted in a way we couldn't have foreseen or prepared for. Um, we have a history um to to look back to that gives us some guidance. Um, but what what I feel is important to say is that we have not forgotten our seniors and we will look for ways to, I I believe my heart that that we should be looking for ways to recognize them, recognize their journey. And um, it's hard to hear this, but they are making history right now. They'll be remembered for how they respond right now. And um, and what we do, uh, this, this is um their and our defining moments. And and the rea- I, the reason why I started with that is because, and this is also building on what Mr. Delalo had just shared in that um looking, looking down the road for contingency plans for things like um our commencement ceremony. Can we be um putting dates out there as a contingency plan? Maybe uh something later in the summer so that people have something to look forward to and plan. And I don't know if this is, this is being discussed now, but I do hope so.
Uh, Dr. Robinson, I take the mirror.
So um, all those things, Mrs. Hoffman, and and many, many, many other things that 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 um that has made the last week seem like it's been a year um are are being contemplated and tossed around. And um, and and trying to be addressed in a responsible and measured way. What I mean by that is that the the fluid nature of things is that decision that we made yesterday that we thought would be a good decision for the coming days um changed because of of many different factors. Um, and so so once we get a better sense of of where we're going with the school year, um, we would then try to have some sense of what those contingencies look like. I I think we're all in agreement that that um if opportunities allow, we will try to always maximize opportunities for the betterment of our students, be it our seniors or otherwise. Um, because you're right, this, this, this is a pretty impactful on on everyone, not only uh students. It's turned the lives of everyone upside down. And things that we thought were priorities are are quite frankly, now secondary in nature. Um, and so so yes, the 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 answer is yes. Do we, can we do and say right now? I think it'd be grossly premature to do and say anything right now, but certainly um as new information come about, we will certainly try to 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 analyze and and make sense out of things and and approach things in a very strategic way. And I think this, this is the best thing we could do for our community, for people to know that we are being very thoughtful. We are being very intentional. We are being very deliberate with our actions and not being reactionary, trying to be as proactive as we possibly can. Recognizing again that there are many factors that we simply don't control.
Thank you.
Is there another question out there? Go ahead. I think I can hear you, Naomi. Do you have a question? I can barely hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Uh, better. Yep. Can Dr. Robinson hear you?
Yes, I can hear you a little bit, Mrs. Stevenson.
Listen, uh, you know, I, these comments, I I certainly appreciate and I always appreciate my work, uh, my board colleagues' opinions on these different topics. And you know, this is, this is uncharted territory. Uh, this is unbelievable, but as much as we want to look at one population, we have to remember that as a board, a lot of people are coming at us with a lot of comments, a lot of concerns, a lot of, a lot of, uh, they're worried, right? So we're looking at, I mean, it's not just seniors, it's the whole population of students that we're 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 dealing with right now. It's the teachers that are putting all this work in. It is the administrative staff. It is the community. Um, this is view. So I just want to put it out there that as much as I know we all come with, we want to make a comment, we want to give an opinion. You know, nobody knows what tomorrow's going to bring. This changes every day. I work in healthcare. I work for a health plan. This is involving as we speak. So we know. Um, I think we leave it, and I have the utmost faith in Dr. Robinson and the administrative staff and how they're rolling down the road with this. I think it's imperative as a board that we all stay um cognizant of that fact. And when we're, when we're talking with the community, I think it's very, very important as well that we're um sending the message of what we're seeing. I have a fifth grader and an eleventh grader and I'm watching them sit across from table from each other every day, engaged and and doing the best that they can to make, to to do what they know they're supposed to be doing. Not every student has that luxury. So there's a lot of moving pieces here. Um, I don't normally get on a, on a soapbox like this, but I also entertain many texts and many comments from my community who I, I love, but we we need to keep, we need to keep a reality on this and as much as I, no, I I'm a big control freak, but at this point, I turn, I turn Dr. Robinson and administrative staff to roll down the road.
And I just want to add that um I was building on a comment of some what um was um brought up earlier. I, and I think it needed to be said, I do support our entire community. I really do. I I I also, um, uh, as you were talking, I just thought about one other thing that I also wanted to share. And it was a question I had about the backpack program and how it's um, how it's working at this point in time. Dr. Robinson, is it possible to post on our Shen website the drop locations for those who are making donations?
Yes, we we can do so. Um, and and I think it was on the site, but we could, I've revisited that again to make sure um for people who want to give donations. And then again, that's one of those things that if you even try to control that because we can't afford for people to come up in masses to to donate things. And and even that process, um, again, a lot of things that we have to take in consideration that while people are being generous, um, we have to consider the 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 help, the health precautions that that we have to take as well. So so the answer is yes. Um, and and the volunteers are carefully monitoring that program um to to balance between providing um food um options for our students and families with also the health um um concerns. So so yes, we are looking at that again to see where information is and how information is being shared.
Are there any other questions out there? If not, uh, can I get a motion to adjourn? Mr. Gilbert first, Mrs. Hoffman second. All in favor? I can see all in favor, hands waving. Any any ayes? Okay, motion carries, meeting adjourned.
Good job, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.